Well, she was here for dinner. Oh, because she might have... Didn't you just meet with Janelle?
I did.
Yeah. So she's here.
Oh, you think he's up there?
There. He's up there.
Oh.
Okay. He'll be down in a minute then. Okay.
That's what I heard.
How are you? How you doing?
Good, David.
Yours, I presume?
Yes, of course. Because yours is...
Oh, okay. Can I stick it in my eye later?
All right.
Do you first?
So...
I think you better. It won't take them that long to come down the steps, but...
Oh.
You've got a full work around. Strategy didn't work. Three pages. Hopefully it did. Well, it's a little special, isn't it?
They're running on Glenn time.
You're ready to set your watch.
It's okay.
Khalil and Janelle, it's pretty bad when Glenn's here before you.
Perfect. You guys were running in early.
Take your time, dear bud.
No rush. We've got two minutes to spare. Two minutes to spare.
I don't want...
If we get any more family prom stuff, they're nuts. I'm seeing it everywhere.
I chose up everywhere. I haven't put it back on.
Me, too. Me, too.
Oh, my. Did you hear me?
Sure.
Did the material. She did a good job.
Where'd she have that song?
I don't know.
Tomas?
Oh, yeah. Damn, damn, damn. I know.
Audrey just arrived with about... I got my friends.
I have my version. I didn't get a chance to type it out.
Just fact-check me if I can say it.
You're lucky you got it.
You're here for a couple days.
That'll look good. Now that's on. Oh, there's...
It's like we're not having here, so that's good.
And Audrey's home by herself. For a few days, and she's going to New Year's Eve. I've been watching the kids at night, so I get that. I'm kidding, I'm like, I had a round with a book manager.
The kid is here. The kid is here.
And the big brother is, too. Good evening. It is Monday, May 23rd at 6:30 PM, and we're here for the monthly meeting of Mayor and City Council. If you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Before we get into the swearing-in, there were some folks, I think, that wanted to make some comments at the table. And so Carolyn, do you want to start, or...
Sure, I sure can. Ted, it's hard to say what I need to say to you, but the bottom line is that, you know, I even had to write it down so I make sure I didn't give O'Shaughnessy. Your institutional knowledge is unsurpassed. Our history and present, buildings, homes, people, family, he knows it all, guys. Strategic relationships with federal, state, and local officials aided us in more ways than we can ever know. But on a personal note, I have learned so much. His generosity with his time and knowledge, that meant a great deal to me and his friendship. I appreciate it, Ted, and I thank you for what you've done for us and what you've done to this city.
Ted, I know this job is a difficult one, and I just know from even the week that I'm not even quite mayor, how much energy and commitment it takes. And so for you to have done that so long for our city is a credit to you. And the other thing I'd like for the community to know is that when I asked Ted if he would continue to help me, he said that he would help in any way that he could. And again, that speaks a lot for your character, Ted, and Lewis has a lot to be appreciative to, for, to you.
Thank you.
I'll make a few comments. You know, obviously Ted Becker's contributions from a municipal, public level, Carolyn captured a lot of them. I mean, you know, Ted's been in part of this government for 18 years, and I think that is quite a long time in this day and age, and has done an enormous amount of good things for this city, in terms of his professionalism of the role, but outreach to other communities. Carolyn mentioned congressional delegations, others where it matters, state government. I think the city of Lewis is seen by a lot of people in a very positive light as a model town, you know, in a good part because of Ted Becker and what he has done in contributing to not just Lewis, but the surrounding area here, and making sure we're all part of the same family. But prior to that, Ted did an enormous amount for this town since 1978 as a private citizen. And I think, you know, we serve on the Greater Lewis Foundation together, but prior to that, Ted was involved in Canalfront Park, Friends of the Lewis Library, I mean, it goes on and on, where his contributions have been enormous. And so Ted, I salute you and thank you for all you've done and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much, Khalil.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So 18 years ago, when Ted came on City Council, I was a very young planner with the Office of State Planning Coordination, and I worked with Sussex County and the towns within Sussex County. So I did have the pleasure of spending a good bit of time in Lewis. And three people really stand out from that time. And Jim Ford, at the time, was mayor, so obviously I would see Mayor Ford at, you know, league dinners, SCAT dinners, and other events. But the other two people who just made such a huge impression on me were Ted Becker and Barbara Vaughn. And I just always enjoyed talking to both of you at the dinners, and I found you to be such great ambassadors for the city of Lewis. So many years later, when the job came open as city manager, in addition to the fact that I knew I loved Lewis, I knew that I had a ton of respect for Ted and that I would be honored to be able to work with him. And for the past five years, it has truly been an honor to work with you, and I think I've learned a lot. And there are a lot of things that, you know, I have counted on your institutional knowledge. So I told you earlier today, I'm going to start trying to do some of my own research before calling you, but, you know, I just, again, for 18 years, I've seen how you have served the city of Lewis. And you always say that Lewis is a community of volunteers, and I think you exemplify that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good chance.
So I'm the one guy in the room that has kind of the unique perspective of going behind closed doors with him and being duty-bound not to say a word about what he and I talked about. As the lawyer, that's kind of a unique role I get to play. I'm not going to tell you what those conversations were. What I will tell you is that I always had the sense that this mayor's heart was in the right place, and his dedication to this town is unquestionable. So I've enjoyed our time together, and I appreciate all that we've been able to share.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. So it is quite an honor to have served this community as long as I have. So in thinking about it, I have a little statement that I'd like to share with everyone here this evening. Since first purchasing property in Lewis in 1979, I have been witness to the amazing transformation of this community. With my first purchase of commercial property in 1986, I've been directly involved with the metamorphosis of our thriving historic business district. I have worked to ensure that our local businesses have brought a unique mix of independent shopkeepers who've been able to differentiate themselves from the chain stores in the surrounding area. As our local businesses have evolved into thriving business district, it has taken city officials, the Chamber of Commerce, store owners, working together to create a community that is admired throughout the region. And I do believe it is an admired community throughout the region. Over the past 18 years, it has been my honor and privilege to work with fellow city officials, the Chamber of Commerce, business owners, and residents to ensure that there is a balance that respects the history of the Lewis community and yet assures that we will rise to meet the challenges of sea level rise, resiliency, and rampant development that is occurring both within and the city and surrounding lands. As I conclude my eight years as mayor of this community, I urge members of the city government to respect the long-established core values of Lewis as they strive to ensure the future of this community. It is a challenge that will require diligence and measured adjustments, as well as extensive work with Sussex County and the state, but one that can be achieved. I thank the Lewis community for affording me the honor and the privilege to serve the community for the past 18 years, and I look forward to Lewis's future. Thank you all.
So Mayor-elect Williams and Ellen Lorraine, if you could go to the podium and... If you want Rita and the kids with you, you can do that.
Yes, have them stand up with him. No, no.
Okay, please repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Andrew Williams.
Do solemnly swear and affirm...
Do solemnly swear and affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Delaware...
And the Constitution of the State of Delaware...
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and with fidelity...
That I will faithfully, impartially, and with fidelity...
Perform the duties as mayor for the city of Lewis to the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of the mayor of the city of Lewis to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I guess that means...
I mean to change seats.
Shut me off? Okay.
You got to shift over.
If you can get you to sign that.
We'll do that next time.
It's a little off balance with everything.
All right. So I think it calls for here, for the next part, a presentation and possible action on the appointment of a member of the city of council to fill the seat vacated by myself, Andrew Williams. So I guess I'll need some help on the procedure. Do I call, do we just name who it is, or do we vote, or... At your discretion, you can announce the name of who you're intending to appoint and say whatever you would like to say about this individual, and then there'll be a vote of the council. Okay. So first of all, I'd like to say again, Lewis being so rich with individuals who could serve in this role, and my role, and many others, so there were lots of people to choose from. So the person that we as a council came together on really just fills the need that we have right now as a council. They have a lot of experience with this city. They have served this city in a variety of roles. And again, when asked how they would like to serve the city, their answer was, "I've always served the city where the city has needed me." And that's the type of heart that we want and to be part of our council. So the person that's going to at least fill the rest of this year, and hopefully will consider running again, is, that I would like to nominate, is Candace Vassella.
And, you know, speaking of the process, Andrew kind of laid it out. We had a strong list of people who were interested and who were very qualified, but I think I can speak for most of us in that I think we fairly quickly coalesced around Candace for a few reasons. One is, as Andrew mentioned, she has served this town in a number of capacities. And I think what Andrew mentioned to me one time that was really telling was Candace actually was a candidate for council back in, I think, 2012, 2013, if I recall, and did not win. But nonetheless, after that election, she threw herself into a variety of endeavors, Friends of Lewis Library and others, Board of Adjustment, and, not Board of Adjustment, but that's the kind of commitment, dedication, and maturity I think is always welcome on a public body. And she has a strong military background, combined with a government relations background, which I have as well, at least on the government relations side. And I was very impressed with people I talked with about Candace just doing my own due diligence as someone who is accomplished, straightforward, and dedicated. And I think, you know, those are the qualities that, you know, make for a good person to serve in any public capacity. So I fully endorse the appointment, and I look forward to voting for Candace. I'll just mention, if anyone else has any comments.
Oh, I do. I met with Candace, interviewed her, just as though I was interviewing somebody for a job. Her personality is just perfect for us. Her skills and abilities to fall right in line with where we are, and the very fact that we don't have to train her. It makes all the difference in the world right now, given how heavy our plate is. So we look forward to working with her. She brings a lot to the table, and we can't wait to get started.
Ellie's you, Richard.
Yeah, sure does, definitely. I welcome Candace to the council. I also spoke with Candace, and I'm familiar with Candace having... First met her when she ran for BPW many years ago, and we had a driveway conversation. And at that time, we were, I will say, healthy opponents of each other. We had different views on issues at that time. But nonetheless, we've remained friendly towards each other, and she has an excellent attitude and approach to this work that we provide as council people. So I welcome Candace to the council. And happy to vote for her.
You need a motion.
Can I make a... Yeah, we need a motion.
Yep. I'll make a motion that the council approve the appointment of Candace Vassella for the Lewis City Council.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Candace. So our plan is to have, we have a regular workshop, and the next one is scheduled, I believe, for June 1st, is that right?
June 1st at 9:00.
And so if anyone wants to tune in for that or attend that, that's the day that we'll be swearing-in Candace on that day. And she'll be joining us, ready to go. All right. Thank you for your willingness. Okay. Before we get into the appointees, and there are a few announcements I wanted to make. First of all, today was the launch of Lewis Line. So thanks to Carolyn and the work of Khalil and staff, particularly Ellen Lorraine and others, that went off today, and we'll run through... Carolyn, when will that run through?
September 30th.
September 30th, okay. So look for those buses out going around the town today and through September 30th. The other thing I'd like to announce is I mentioned during my campaign that I'm going to start doing some mayor coffees. So I'm going to start that this Thursday at 7:30, and we'll have the first one right here. I think there's no one in the building at 7:30, so I'll be in the vestibule there, waiting to let you in. Or I can prop the door open, or Tim can hold it, but we'll hold the first one here, and then we'll find a more traditional coffee spot. No, bring your own. All right. Ann Marie will be making an announcement later as part of her report about the lifeguard situation, but it's looking up, so I'll just say that as a teaser. The other thing I'd like to mention is Public Arts has three displays currently on in the city of Lewis. They have a meeting this 24th. Bike and pedestrian committee also has a meeting on the 25th this week. In terms of county council, there is a meeting tomorrow. So those who want to tune in, that is at 10 o'clock, and the planning and zoning will be on the 26th, and that is at 5 o'clock. The other thing I'd like to mention is we will be holding a special meeting on the 31st. The Friends of Rodney had asked whether the council, when the time was available, would be willing to stand as a council and answer questions, and I think that time is available now. So we would like to make that opportunity on the 31st. And help me again on the time, Ann Marie.
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
At the Rollins Center.
And I believe that's the only thing that'll be on the docket that night. Okay. All right. Any other announcements from the table that I missed? That I missed? Okay. All right. Okay. All right. So let's then move on to, I don't think we have any additions or deletions. So the next up, and why we moved Candace's appointment up earlier in the agenda is because the next thing we need to do is appoint ex-officios and members of various committees. So I'll start that. And same process, right? I'm going to make nominations. They will discussion or vote. Okay. Perfect. Okay. So for the role of deputy mayor, currently as Andrew Williams, that is to be nominated as Khalil Saliba. The current secretary is Tim Ritzard. I nominate him, Tim, to remain in that role. The assistant secretary, I'd nominate Kayla. Treasurer, Carolyn Jones. City Solicitor, Glenn Mendelis. Ex-officio to BPW. Now Glenn, it's been raised that the mayor shall appoint to BPW, but you've indicated there's, traditionally, it's the mayor, and there's no issue with that?
Traditionally, yes, and shall appoint. My interpretation is that shall means you may appoint yourself.
Okay. So to uphold tradition and the request of BPW, I'll continue with that tradition of having the mayor serve on the BPW. The BPW is forming a finance committee, and Carolyn Jones will serve as ex-officio to the BPW Finance Committee. Code enforcement officer will be John Robitaille. Ex-officio to Planning Commission will be Andrew Williams and Tim Ritzard. Ex-officio Planning Commission to BPW right now is Tom Panetta. They'll have their annual meeting, I believe, next week, and they may...
Tuesday.
Tuesday, oh, this Tuesday, okay. And may appoint someone, it's Tom Panetta.
Wednesday, Wednesday. I'm sorry.
No worries, no worries. H Park will, ex-officio will be Candace Vassella. Ex-officio to Parks and Rec will remain Carolyn Jones. We have combined Traffic and Safety along with Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and that will be ex-officio as Khalil Saliba. Khalil Saliba will also maintain a role as ex-officio to the African-American Heritage Commission. Tim Ritzard will take over for Andrew Williams under the ex-officio for Public Art. And the mitigation planning team will be Andrew Williams and Candace Vassella. Finance, we're throwing a heavy load here, leaning on our expertise, will be Candace Vassella and Carolyn Jones on finance. We have inter-governal relations as a role here in the city, and the charter reading indicates to me that it can be a citizen, that it needn't be a council person. And so we're going to try this out, and so our liaison to the state will be Dave Ennis, and our liaison to the county will be Thomas Bane. And so the idea with these roles is that they'll sort of track, again, the meetings, the important events that may be affecting Lewis, or the state, or Sussex County, and we may have their report out here. And if they take meetings, they will take one of us, and I think it's a good opportunity for, frankly, the citizens to get involved in a meaningful way. So hopefully, it will be more to citizens that will maybe look for these types of roles. Okay. The FOIA coordinator is also Kayla, and our city assessor will remain as Bill Lux. So I nominate those folks for the appointees. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint. Do we have to further stay any more than that?
You don't have to, and you can appoint them as a slate or take them individually if you want.
No, just do it as a slate.
Yeah. I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, there's no additions or deletions. Let's move on now to proclamations. Before we do that, actually, let's move up, if we don't mind, can we just move up the additional commission appointments, H2 and H3?
Is your microphone still working? Excuse me.
Yeah, appreciate it.
There you go.
Okay. So before we get to the, actually, let's go ahead and do that, I'm sorry. Is Alliance Club here?
We are.
Okay.
Oh, okay, we better do it.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Why don't you come on up and make your presentation?
You'll have to excuse me, I have tinnitus, so if I don't hear something... Mr. Mayor, City Council of Lewis, I'm a son of Lewis, and it's an honor to be here, and on behalf of the Lewis Lions Club, it's a privilege. When the city, the community, and the need of the public comes and says, "We have a need," we the Lewis Lions Club, we serve. And on behalf of the Lewis Lions Club, we would like to present to the councilwoman on behalf of Parks and Recreation, a check in the amount of $4,000 to help with Block House Pond and your bench of beaches for the bench of the city of Lewis.
Well, thank you.
Why don't you do it together? Why don't you do it together? Do the treasurer, do the treasurer anyway.
Yeah.
It should have changed.
Yeah.
Carol, make sure you get that to the bank tonight.
Yeah, this is right. This is Carolyn's press day. And it's the park benches?
It's for your, I think you wanted to put in a disc golf thing on Block House Pond. Anything in addition goes to your benches for the Lewis...
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you. Yeah, very nice.
Yep, Ellen Lorraine, baby. Thank you again, sir.
Thank you to the Lions Club. And that comes from, they run a shack down at the beach, and so the proceeds are coming from there on Savannah Beach. That's very generous of the Lions Club. All right, so the next thing is H2 on our agenda. And this is presentation of possible action on the appointments of Planning Commission to fill the completed terms of Bob Heffernan, Joe Hockner, and Drew McKay. In meeting with members of the Planning Commission, I was pleased to hear that the two members that are here would like to renew their terms. So Bob Heffernan and Joe Hockner have agreed to continue to serve in those roles. And both, as I talked to their various members, are respected and valued members of the team. So I think that's important in maintaining that. The seat that is available, we would like, I would like to nominate Jackie Metta to fill the available seat on the Planning Commission. I have a motion to approve?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve Jackie Metta to fill the available seat on the Lewis Planning Commission.
And all three, I'm asking for a motion to approve?
Of all three, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. I'll make a motion that all three, Joe Hockner, Bob Heffernan, and newly appointed Jackie Metta to serve on the Lewis Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you for the score.
Okay. H3, presentation of possible action on appointments to the Historic Preservation Architectural Review Committee to fill completed terms of Michael Idar, Bill Landon, and Joe Hockner. I would like to nominate Michael Idar, Bill Landon, and Melanie Moser to take the role at H Park. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion, and we take all three, or two of them.
All three.
Actually, it's three of them.
Yeah.
Michael, William, and Melanie.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Okay, H4 is, I want to apologize. It's better when I do this electronically here, follow along. So H4 is proclamation for Gun Violence Awareness Day. And I think this is particularly meaningful with recent.
Mine said removed.
Violence in Buffalo. But I'll take the time to read this proclamation, if I can get there. Do you have it open, Khalil, by chance?
The proclamation?
I don't think I've seen it.
I have it. It actually, Julian or Blue, could you put it on the screen? It's linked to the agenda. Would you like me to read it, sir?
Yeah, I had it somewhere.
No, I don't have it.
It's not? It's not this one?
Take this one.
It's this one. Okay. Whereas the first day in June is proclaimed to be Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Lewis to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that as a country, we must do more to reduce gun violence. And every day, more than 110 Americans are killed by gun violence along more than 200 who are shot and wounded. And on average, there are nearly 16,000 gun homicides every year. Delaware experienced the highest year-to-year spike in gun violence from 2019 to 2020, with a 45% increase in the age-adjusted rate of gun deaths. In an average year, Delaware, 107 people die by guns, 279 people are wounded. 51% of all gun deaths in Delaware are suicide. Gun violence costs Delaware $713 million each year, of which 36 million is paid by taxpayers. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous history, and whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than two years increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide, and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in gun violence. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms away from people with dangerous histories, and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep, to help keep our children safe. That I, Mayor of the city of Lewis, declare the first day, the June 3rd, 2022, to be Gun Violence Awareness Day by wearing orange on this day. We will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violent victims and survivors. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent tragic events of gun violence and honor and value human lives. So. All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda, all right? Does anyone want to pull anything out of the consent agenda?
Yeah, I would like to pull the council minutes that were included in our binder. And there are some corrections that need to be made, so defer.
Do you want to defer those?
Well, those have been, those have been given to Kayla, and they're all clerical corrections. There weren't any.
No, there were more, there were some serious editorial corrections as well.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to defer that.
I gave her mine. They were just typos. Nothing that mattered to me.
Khalil, anything on that?
No.
Why don't we defer the minutes? And we'll, could we approve the Board of Public Works minutes, the financial activities, the police activity report, fire department activity report? And we'll approve the March minutes in the June meeting.
Okay.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Yes, and motion to approve the, all the Board of Public Works and postpone the other one for the next meeting, the March one we're doing now.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Just to be clear, it's a motion to approve the consent agenda put for the mayor and city council minutes of March 14.
Everything but the minutes.
Correct.
All the others.
Not voting. We have a second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. 4-0, Tim.
Yep, thank you.
All right, Anne Marie. So now's the time for the presentation of the city manager's report for April.
All right, can you pull the PowerPoint up? So I'll go through the PowerPoint. But at the end, I do want to talk about some more current things because, again, this is a report about last month. So if you can go to the first slide, or the next slide. So Capitol projects are continuing. The city and GMB staff met with residents of Railroad Monroe and Adams Avenue twice during the month of April. One onsite where we went through and looked at specific areas of concern. Design is continuing, and we hope to bid the project in the fall. Obviously, we'll have an update on this at the Capitol Projects meeting. BPW is installing sewer on Savannah and Dutchman, or I'm sorry, and Donovan's Road. It will serve Dutchman's Harvest, and ultimately Donovan Smith Mobile Manufactured Home Park. That has had a little bit of disruption. The Atlantic Drive at Savannah is closed, so there is a detour. But that is actually progressing ahead of the anticipated schedule, which is a lovely thing for a Capitol project. So the BPW is continuing the installation of the water main and services along Pilot Town Road. This says that the project would be complete to New Road by May 15th. That was actually the pavement, the paving up to New Road was completed by the end of last week, so it wasn't quite the 15th. And the remainder of the project will go until July 15th. Lewis Waterfront Preserve is continuing the installation of infrastructure. We actually did receive the first building permit requests. Tower Hill developers are working on sewer installation that will serve them and Lewis Waterfront Preserve. One of the things that we have found out from the various developers is that transformers are on a 50 to 100 week, or, yeah, right, 50 to 100 week lead time. So some of the projects that I think they were expecting to make some progress on are going to be moving a little more slowly. On April 4th, I think everybody knows that mayor and city council held a public hearing on the annexation of Donovan Smith Manufactured Home Park. On April 14th, mayor and council voted to annex the park. We are in contact with the owners, and the BPW is working to get the bid documents finalized and plan to bid it this summer. Think the MOU is signed, with the exception of the state, I think is the only signatory at this point. So that is moving along. So hopefully, we can get that out. We actually had, with our department staff, we had a meeting with the HOA today, and we took over our trash collection, trash and recycling collection for Donovan Smith this week. We notified the residents in writing, hand-delivered door-to-door last week. And so far, that transition seems to be going smoothly. We are looking to plan for a community-wide meeting with the city departments so that we can talk about the services, I think, later in June. I think the tentative date we have right now is June 27th. The Planning Commission hosted a workshop on April 26th to gain public input regarding the five-year review of the 2015 comprehensive plan, which was actually approved in 2017, so it's not as behind as it seems. And the workshop was very well attended. And Janelle and our consultant are reviewing the input that was received, and that will continue, they will continue to work with the Planning Commission as they move this forward. Jonathan Garcia began employment as the new code enforcement officer on April 25th. Our city's negotiation team has continued negotiation with Teamsters regarding the Police Department Collective Bargaining Agreement. I will just add, while we're talking about personnel, that recruitment of seasonal personnel has been incredibly difficult this year. We are experiencing what so many other employers are experiencing. Right now, we have parking enforcement officers, but we're down a couple. We are very fortunate that we were able to recruit the bus drivers we needed for the Lewis Line. And in some cases, we're sharing with, among multiple departments to get that need taken care of. Our maintenance department has been unable to recruit the normal level of summer staffing that we have, but they, you know, they will make do with whatever staff we can get. And again, I will conclude my report with kind of an update on the lifeguard situation. Continue to issue building permits. I think we only have one new home permit during the month of April. Trash collection continues to be, you know, pretty consistent. We're into bonfire season, 18 bonfire permits, four outdoor amplification, five park use, and three weddings. So it is a season where the use of our outdoor facilities is going to be picking up. We have 31 new business licenses and five new rental licenses. I believe one of those new rental licenses was due to the post-compliance enforcement. Melody Barger and I attended the ICMA Regional Conference in early April in Boston. Staff from the Building Officials Office attended floodplain training through FEMA in April. Melody Barger, our Local Government Management Fellow, attended the International City-City Management Association's High Performance Leadership Academy on April 15th. That was a very intense leadership academy that was offered to managers throughout the country. The Executive Committee on Resiliency completed its work on April 12th and forwarded recommendations to mayor and city council. The IPA will be preparing a memo to memorialize the recommendations out of this. And at our last workshop meeting, we talked about what we need to do to bring those recommendations before council in an actionable form. On April 29th, Mayor Becker, councilperson Ritzard, Kayla Pedrick, Ellen Lorraine McCabe, and I attended the SCAT Legislative Breakfast. Both Mayor Becker and I presented on various topics. Kayla Pedrick has actually taken over the role of administrative assistants with the Sussex County Association of Towns. So I've been meeting with the chairs of the boards, commissions, and committees, along with the ex officios assigned to each board, commission, and committee, to work on preparing an orientation program for those who serve. That is scheduled for June 8th in the evening. Our staff is continuing to work on developing the content for that. And then I attended the Five Points Working Group meeting in person. It was the first in-person working group meeting we had since the pandemic started, and that was on April 25th. We met with the Olson Group regarding the update of the Sussex County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And as Mayor Williams said, the staff has worked very hard in, by staff, I mean really Ellen Lorraine, and of course Carolyn, and Khalil, and.
You.
And Sam.
And you.
And others. But anyway, to get the Lewis Line ready. And we were able to sell the sponsorships, and the buses look great, and we have an app. And it's just, it's really exciting, and we had our launch for that this morning.
It's on the news.
It's on the news.
I watched it.
Yeah. So, again, just spread the word about that. I think it really is something we've talked about for a really long time. And I think it really can make getting around in Lewis a lot easier during the height of the season. So the thing that I think is really important that I want to share is we had made the determination based on the fact that we had a total of four applications, only two of whom had prior experience as lifeguards. We had made the very difficult decision that we were not going to be able to have lifeguards on our beaches. And when that got out, I was contacted by Kent Buckson, who interestingly, I had tried to connect with before we made the announcement. And he is the manager of the pool and beach at North Shores, and was for many years the lifeguard captain in Rehoboth Beach. And he reached out to me, and Janet Reeves and I met with him last week. And we, he has so many connections, and it looks like we now have a new captain who is willing to come on, who has a ton of experience. He's a swim coach, which also gives him access to young people who are interested in lifeguarding, which was, again, part of our big problem. And we, when people heard that we weren't going to have lifeguards, we ended up having kids contact us that were interested in lifeguarding. So in the last week, we really have been able to turn the corner to where we are going to be able to get up and running for this weekend with at least a partial staff. We should be able to have four guards on this weekend, we believe. And we're continuing to vet candidates. And we believe that we will be able to fully guard our beaches. And the guy who has come on as captain, his full-time job is he's a swim coach. And he's looking at this as something he could do long-term. So we are.
That's fantastic.
I mean, it is, it is like, literally an answered prayer. Because none of us liked the idea of not having lifeguards. I think we all know Lewis Beach has gotten busier and busier every year. And we have a lot of young families. And, you know, we do have kids that wander off and end up somewhere else, and the lifeguards help to get them back to their parents. We have had rescues. So, you know, being able to guard the beaches is, again, we're just very thankful beyond belief that Mr. Buckson reached out, that he had a network, and he was able to use that network to put together what I think is going to be a pretty strong team of lifeguards for the summer.
That's great.
That's really good.
I certainly want to compliment you, Anne Marie, because I know in the beginning, I remember you contacting me and asking me if I had Kent Buckson's contact info. And I did not. And now I understand why you were trying to reach out there. And it's a great example of city staff really working hard because we, I mean, I think we all know there was a lot of consternation and even criticism about Lewis not providing lifeguards. And fortunately, Kent. And fortunately, Kent Buckson, and this is where communities like Lewis, Rehoboth, and others, and Milton and Dewey get together and help each other. So I think that's a credit to you and your outreach efforts, and our surrounding communities stepping up for us.
Yeah, we're very fortunate. I mean, Kent is clearly very enthusiastic about water safety, and, you know, I asked, you know, are you looking to be a consultant? He said, I just want to help you get it done.
That's great.
And that, I mean
That's really good.
Very thankful.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Anne Marie. Before we get into the agenda itself, Kayla, I know that it looks like there's 26 folks on. Could you just go ahead and read through the names so that the people in here and the people online can know who's also attending?
Barbara Streisand.
Okay, not everyone has a last name.
That's okay. Yeah, you can name it, Barbara.
Okay, so there's Barbara, Barbara Wornell. There's Betsy Reamer, Bobby Brookhedge, Calvin Jabber. There's
Ever Ewald.
Sorry, I lost my, my Zoom went lowered, sorry.
So I can, I can read them out. We got Deb Ewald, Doug Rock, Eunice Henderson, Frankie Bradshaw, James Weaver. Looks like, is it Janice Pinto?
Yes. Janice Pinto, then there's Dach Jackie.
Okay.
And then Jim B., Kenny Morris, Louis Chamber.
Libby.
Libby.
And Nancy Stacy, Rick, Robert Kennedy, and Sharon Dardine, and Stephen Hansel. Okay. Thanks, everyone, for attending. Try to recreate as much as we can with the virtual, and let each other know who's on there, so I appreciate that. Now, we're going to get into the agenda itself, so unfinished business. We're going to start with K1, Presentation Possible Action on Ordinance 422. This is an ordinance repealing and replacing in its entirety Chapter 170 of the Subdivision Land Development Code and amending Article 5 Dimensional Requirement and Article 6 Historical Preservation and Architectural Review, Chapter of 197 Zoning of the Municipal Code of the City of Lewis, by amending Sections 197.50 Cluster Development, 197.57 Jurisdiction and Procedures, and 197.58 Historic District or Property Review Process relating to the Subdivision and Land Development Code. So I know this is a, an amendment and working of the code that's taken quite a amount of time and effort by the Subcommittee. I don't know if we wanted, was Nancy planning to maybe introduce this, or someone else from the Planning Commission, or Janelle?
I was Janelle.
Okay.
Take care of it, if you don't mind.
All right, Janelle.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
So Council held a public hearing. At your public hearing, you left the record open until last Friday at noon. At that time, we did receive one additional comment from the public. That was from John Keiker, and he had some comments. And then we did receive some minor changes from the Board of Public Works, that they forgot to add a few things and preferred BPW engineer versus city engineer. So I did make those amendments, and they are on the website under the subdivision code. The Planning Commission's recommendations were in yellow, and the Board of Public Works' recommendations were in an orange color. I would note that the changes to Chapter 197, all they're doing is referencing the new number, and some of those changes in the, in Chapter 170 didn't actually change in, regarding the site plan aspects. It's just the numbering changed, and so we just wanted to make sure the numbers are referenced back to the right location, because we didn't want something in the zoning code to reference the wrong section of the subdivision land development code. So we did address the comments from the Board of Public Works and the recommendation from the Planning Commission. Again, they did recommend approval with a couple of changes, and I'm here to answer any questions and happy to help with anything I can do.
Is anyone prepared to make a motion and then have a discussion, or?
Obviously, first, we, we had a fantastic presentation by Nancy. I mean, the work that they've done, they did was incredible, but I think the most important thing for us is that in the past, we've had to depend on studies and things that were done before, and I think what I like about this is that we're ahead of it. We at the council here will get information prior to all these decisions being made, because my issue has always been, I don't want to know, I don't want to get something and everything's been dotted and teed, and all we're doing is just saying, okay. So now we have some words, we have words, we have a place to say what we need to say before all these decisions are being made. So I make a motion that we accept this.
Well, I mean, I'll just add a couple of things before
There is a motion.
There is a motion.
Do you have a second? Then we could still have a discussion.
I'll second the motion.
Go ahead, Khalil. You can discuss now.
No, I mean, I just wanted to add a couple of things to Carolyn. I mean, I'm very supportive of the work and appreciative of the work that Nancy Stacy and her Subcommittee performed on this. I mean, it's a lot of work, and when we all got the red-line copy of what they had done, they basically rewrote half of the code and rearranged, as Janelle explained to me, the other half. So to Carolyn's point, they, I think they've added some common sense reforms that are going to provide more information upfront to us and others to evaluate decisions. And so I just applaud Nancy and her team and the Lewis Planning Commission as a whole for engaging on this and bringing forth real reform in terms of subdivision rules and regs. So I'll leave it at that, but I am prepared to vote whenever we're ready.
I would like to also offer some words of praise and appreciation for the tremendous effort that the Subcommittee put forward. This is a very substantive and meaningful change to Chapter 170, and I am very appreciative, and I'm really looking forward to seeing how this new ordinance is used by the city as well as by our applicants when they prepare plans to develop properties inside the city. I'm very familiar with this rewrite of Chapter 170. I've read the entire thing several times. And the one point that I would like to stress, and I'm reminded from having read this and also having worked with the previous 170, is that it's a great reminder that these are living documents, and we need to really think about keeping a mindful eye on our ordinances. And not the fact that this is, we're prepared to vote this evening, it does not mean that this book, so to speak, is put on the shelf and never to be looked at again or considered again. This, we will be tweaking this ordinance as we go forward, and I look forward to working with the Planning Commission in that capacity and with staff, as well as with council, to continue to work towards improving this ordinance. But I am prepared to vote.
Do we need a roll call?
Not, this is actually a legislative function. We're not actually acting on any particular land application.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. I think the only comment I'd like to make, as Tim said, I think all ordinances and code tends to go through revision and correction, so this will, this won't be unique, and substantively it represents a major change. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's a 4-0.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. The next agenda that we have on the docket is K2, which is Presentation Possible Action Regarding Allocation of ARPA Funds. And I know we've had this one on here, well, we've had this discussion a couple of times in various strategies of how to use it. And does anyone want to start the discussion? Khalil?
Sure. So, can everyone hear me?
You keep talking, it'll catch up.
It catches, okay. Just for people's background, the City of Lewis received $1.7 million in ARPA funds. ARPA, it's American Rescue Act funds, really designed to assist communities in COVID-related issues. And we have received a number of applications and requests from various groups, from everyone from the BPW to Family Promise to the DAR, the Lewis Fire Department and others, and we have taken some time to evaluate their eligibility for the funding, but we still have some questions left. And there are some questions, and we, I think we're fairly solid, and by the way, some of those funds will be used here in City Hall to upgrade our HVA system and other kind of administrative capital concerns that we have here. So my feeling is, and we've talked about this in other times, is I think we're pretty close to, you know, addressing some of these requests. However, I'm of the view that we should defer these for another week, perhaps at our June 1st workshop, council workshop, because as Tim pointed out to me over the weekend, we have a request from the Milford Housing Trust, but we've never heard from them. We just have a letter that requests it. And however, we've had others from the BPW and the Fire Department that have presented and made, you know, their cases. But I think overall, it will be easier for us to allocate the money if we do it all at one time, as opposed to dealing with one or two tonight, and then not knowing what the other ones may require. So I think it does not make sense to act on one or two now. We can act on them hopefully by, on June 1st. That would be my goal.
So was that a motion?
No, just discussion. Just discussion.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's important that, you know, I see, you know, a lot of people here who are interested in, or applicants, and they, I want them to understand the background.
Well, since we're still getting applicants, we got one as recent as yesterday, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that was from, yep.
So I think the idea of waiting and getting more input, make sure that we're solid on everyone that we have, is an advantage for us. I vote that we hold
I guess the question I have, though, is are we anticipating that they'll come on June 1st, make their pitch, and we'll make the decision that day?
No, we have to get it before, they have to come in before our next meeting.
Well, so my plan was to contact them all today, and today just went poof. So I will contact them between tonight and tomorrow and confirm their availability, Family Promise, and Milford Housing, but honestly, all of those who have asked for funding.
Correct.
So I think it's more realistic to say if we can get them in on the 1st, that they can make a short presentation, you can ask questions, and then you could make decisions at the June 13th meeting. Because this meeting's so late, you really don't have a ton of time before the next meeting, so it doesn't, it doesn't put you that far back.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Plus, we have the insight of our new councilperson.
Right.
That's true.
Okay.
So I think
I think we can just, we can defer, we don't need to take it, we can just defer. Are you, everyone's good with that? Okay, let's do that, then. So, Anne Marie, let's do our level best to see if all three can make it.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right, moving on, then, next is Presentation Possible Action, Request for Time Extension of the Approval of Old Town at Whites Pond. Is our friend Ring here today?
They are not here today. What they're asking for is, they are unable to record the plan until DRBA settles a land dispute.
Switch. Land swap. Transfer, which I believe is your next item on the agenda. So they're asking for
If we did that then, then it would be done.
I think what they're asking for is, can they have the extension until after the land transfer with the DRBA has been recorded, so then they can record right after that.
So you don't expect it to be a full six-month extension?
No, as soon as, they really
But this is the second time, isn't it?
It's the third time.
We have to do something
I can't remember what we did last, but what's the longest extension we can give, just in case?
What is the longest?
I thought it was
There actually isn't any. They just need to be able to, because the signal requi, signal, the traffic signal has been addressed, which was, they were, thought they would be done by then, and then the land transfer between DRBA has now held them up. So they just need enough time until after the DRBA land transfer has been completed, and then they can record. So I think your motion could be that their time extension is until, you know, within 15 days of the DRBA land transfer being recorded, that they have to be recorded.
So is that in the next 60 days? Is that what you're thinking?
I'm hoping less than that. I think they're all expecting less than that.
I mean, simply just saying here that July 31st, 2022, that should do it? If we just give them that extension until then?
There's no harm done in giving them more time, is there?
They can always complete it before.
Correct.
Yeah, so
I'm just
You still want to
I don't want them to be come back for one time.
Right, you don't want, yeah.
We've done it twice, so it's time to make a decision on this.
Well, you've already made the decision, it's, they can't get it recorded because they keep running into
Obstacles, we'll call it.
Yes.
Make a motion by an extension, Khalil.
I make a motion that we do an extension on this.
For what was the period?
For when, until it's
Until it's signed by
Within 15 days
Right.
After the DRBA land transfer has been recorded.
Yes, let's do it that way. I make a motion that we do that, get a second.
I'll second that, yeah.
Yeah.
You got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Gotcha.
Aye.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good, okay. So we're not, we did not establish a date, it's just a 15-day extension.
15 days prior.
After the signing.
After they
They've got to be recorded, which
Correct.
Okay.
That's a good solution. Yeah, okay, that's interesting.
All right, then, that next piece of the puzzle, then, is this Presentation Possible Action on Agreement for Purchase of Real Estate Relating to Monroe Avenue Intersection. Janelle, could you give us a little bit of background on this one?
Glenn, Glenn has reviewed the documents, but several months ago, we came before you.
Yeah.
Well, with, Ring Lardner came with a request of swapping some land, and some of it is right-of-way, that is part of Freeman Highway, that is still owned by the city. And the idea is, if we would swap some of that, it would make some of the other puzzle pieces fall into place. So you all gave your blessing to DRBA and I think Rob Gibbs and the developer to work it out. They've worked it out. They've got a, an agreement that is on this evening's agenda. DRBA approved it last week at their meeting. Glenn's reviewed it. Do you have anything else to add, Glenn?
Other than we're really kind of a small player in this agreement, as the whole thing goes, we're really just kind of, you need to pass go to get this done, and you've all seen it before, and we're on board with it when Ring and DRBA presented.
Anybody have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Want to make a motion?
We're just accepted, is that what you want us to do at this point, Glenn?
It's just a motion to authorize the town, the city manager, to sign the agreement.
Okay, well, I make a motion that the city manager sign the agreement.
You have a second?
Yep, I'll second that.
You got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's 4-0. All right, K5, this is Presentation Possible Action on a Recommendation from the Ad-Hoc Committee to Review the Code of Conduct on an Ordinance to amend Chapter 9, the Code of Conduct in Municipal Code, City of Lewis. Karen, you were involved in this, yeah?
Yeah, Anne Marie and I were on that. Well, Anne Marie's the one who finished it up, so I'll let her do it.
So you all had approved this ordinance at your April meeting, and then we sent it off to the Public Integrity Commission, and their role is to review it to determine that it is at least as stringent as the state's Code of Conduct. They reviewed it at their meeting last week, and we, they came back to us with a couple of comments, and you have this on your, I put it on your desk, and it, the highlighted things are the changes based on those comments. The big one was that the way we had it drafted was, it said, previously, it said that a party could call witnesses, and we changed it to say that the board could call witnesses and that the parties could request, and that the Public Integrity Commission said that each party needs to be able to call witnesses. That's, that's part of the procedure.
Drafted sort of to, the board was the one that could elect to subpoena
Or call a witness, but it's now drafted to clarify that the parties individually can request witnesses during the hearing.
That was the only thing that was wrong. Everything else we did
That was really, that was really it, and so if we, oh, do you want to talk about what you did on lines?
Yeah, the only other thing at line 324 is properly identify the standard from a preponderance of the
preponderance of the evidence, which, which used to be the case, to now clear and convincing evidence, which is, which is the proper standard. I just noticed, Amory, that the, the word evidence should be crossed out in this too before we send it back.
Okay.
That was my mistake.
So, may I ask a question about this, please? The, the highlighted text is the suggested recommendations or text from the board, is that correct?
That's right.
From the state board, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and this is before us, for us to review and approve, or just acknowledge? What is the ask?
So what's happened is you approved the initial suggested edits to it, we sent it to the state ethics group, and, you know, it's their job to say is ours is at least as stringent as the state code of conduct. They said it is, but for these two little areas that we think you should revise, we've since revised them, now we'd like you to approve it so that we can send it back to the Public Integrity Commission one more time for their blessing.
I see.
And they should, based upon, we made the changes that they requested.
And it comes back to us for signature for, right?
If they prove it at their June meeting, then it will. It will just be a matter of you as the secretary signing it.
Right, yeah.
Good, good. We don't have to go through it all over again.
Right.
Right.
Unless they find something else.
Something else, I mean, they could, right?
It's minimal that what they found, considering what they've done.
Basically, this is, this is.
Do you have any, any comments on?
On their comments?
No, I was fine with them, that's why we made them.
Yeah, they seen them.
And I did share them with Mark Harris as well, and he didn't have any concerns with them.
Okay, that's helpful.
Okay.
So the process is this would be approved by them, so tomorrow, we're still operating under our own ethics code until this.
That's right, that's right.
Correct.
Yep.
Do we have a motion to approve these updates?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the revisions proffered by the Delaware Public Integrity Commission.
I'll second that motion.
You got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's another four over there.
Yep, thank you.
All righty. All right. Moving right along, we're into new business now. The next agenda item is a presentation and possible action on the scheduling of a public hearing regarding the proposal for the city to purchase property located at 203 East Savannah Road. This is the parcel across from the Dairy Queen. Glenn, any, any comments here on that? And do we have a date in mind?
We, we're looking at June 6th at 6:30, and when we post the agenda, we will post
supporting materials as we've discussed. So the staff has begun to work on the supporting documentation, but the idea is it would be at the Rollins Center at 6:30 on June 6th.
And just a little bit of clarity, the, but it's two parcels, actually, so if anybody's listening and they hear one parcel, it's the two parcels that are located in that area.
I'm going to let the owner of the parcel step, if you have something to say, Rick, please step up, identify yourself and your address, sir.
Rick Quill, 407 East Market Street, Lewis, Delaware. First of all, congratulations, Andrew, on the mayor, being elected mayor, and also a comment about Ted Becker. In my 15 years of interaction with this council and this city, I can honestly say Ted Becker always conducted himself with a decorum, a gentleman, and grace. I can't say the same for myself, but I can honestly say that's about Ted. And I'm sure he'll be an asset, he's always has been an asset to this community. So I'm going to keep it brief, but on behalf of Carl and Joe Johnson and myself, who are business partner owners of that particular parcel, we've owned it for over six years, and we've gone through a lot of trials and tribulations, we're at the juncture now where there's a potential, Ted, Ted mentioned something about some of the issues regarding this town, in particular, development and environmental issues, rising sea level, and the third-headed dragon is beach parking. It's, I'm not going to stand up here being advocate tonight, one way or the other, what this town should do. I'm grateful this town would consider this on behalf of the citizens. What I'm advocating for is that those citizens, whether on social media, meeting my manager on the beach, stopping by my house, I mean, not at my house, walking into the street, and a lot of other people who have expressed opinions about, you know, that particular corner and what they were like. I, I've always asked from day one, and any of my, anything before this council is, and even put in the paper, the civic responsibility is to come in front of the council. Please, I'm begging, I had a prepared statement tonight, but I'm not going to read it, I'm going to put it in the paper, and it's going to ask all those, whether you're for it or against it, to come, because the only way we can all, you know, compromise or resolve a situation is to, a, a, a open and honest discussion about the issues. So I hope that those people who, you know, who came before me, who do drive-bys on social media about my integrity, my greed, or whatever, please show up. And, you know, and I honestly will tell you, I will be civil, I will be civil. But I hope everybody on that date who has invested interest in this town, and where this town is moving forward with a, with a terrific council and its support staff and governance, will show up. Thanks.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
So this is to schedule a public hearing, as Mr. Quill said, hopefully the public will come out, and we'll have lots of people show up for that. And that is, Amory, June 6th, 6:30 is what you're proposing?
Yes.
Okay.
At the Rollins Center.
At the Rollins Center.
Okay, can I have a motion to set a public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing for June 6th at 6:30 at the Rollins Center for the proposal for the city to purchase property located at 203 East Savannah Road.
Got a motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's four. All right, Bill, you're next. I got a presentation and possible action on a request to vacate an easement in the Anglers Nest community.
So I'm just going to give a quick overview of what this is. This is a request to remove. An easement along the rear property line of eight lots in the Anglers Nest subdivision. The applicant has requested the removal of that, they have reached out to both the Board of Public Works and the Sussex Conservation District, who are, as it's called, Utility and Stormwater Management Easement. They have both agreed that it is not necessary to be there, so they are, they are in agreement with the relief and the elimination of this easement in the rear of the 15-foot, rear of the property lines. The planning commission did discuss this at their last meeting, and they did recommend approval of the request. The reason it's here is the easement is 15 feet, the rear setback is 10 feet, as applications for houses have come in, the surveys were not always show, did not show the easement, so houses were built to the 15, to the 10-foot rear yard setback line instead of where they should have been built at the 15-foot easement. This would provide relief for all of those properties. We do note that there is a retaining wall in the back, that is not an issue with this because that is the retaining wall to allow for the bank of the stormwater management that is actually one or two feet within the property lines. That's not a problem of where it's located. And again, the Board of Public Works and the Sussex Conservation District have both agreed, they, they do not need this, and I know the applicant is in discussions with the Board of Public Works to, to finalize an easement for other access, because there are, there is, and just so everybody's aware, there is still access to the stormwater management via easements in at least two other locations on this property. So this does not alleviate any access to get to, to the utilities.
Right.
Actually, there aren't any utilities back there to the stormwater management.
Amy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, congratulations, members of the city council, and as Janelle mentioned, I'm here on behalf of some current property owners and some would-be property owners in Anglers Nest, which probably all of them is, 17-lot subdivision right off Anglers Road across from either side. The plan was approved in 2011 by the city council, and in 2022 was basically discovered that for reasons no one can figure in 2022, in 2011, there was put on eight lots, a 15-foot easement, which, as Janelle mentioned, through just a very unusual set of circumstances, nobody even knew was there, but the real reason they didn't know it was there, there was no reason for it. It said it's a utility easement, there are no utilities there. It said it was for stormwater easement, but you can't even get to the easement area to get into the stormwater area. So once we notice this, but it's had a huge impact because we have six houses that are built in this easement, that very good chance, none of those six people could ever sell their homes without this being corrected. Luckily, though, it can be corrected by the easement being removed. If the easement was needed, be a different story, we'd have to figure that out. But, and the other impact is my other clients are trying to have house plans approved, and their house plans aren't to be just like the other houses, but they can't be because of the easement. So, so we, before we came, even approached the town, we contacted, well, the Board of Public Works, which of course is part of the town, pointed out, gave them all the information we had, and they came back and said, according to them, and they would be the Lewis entity that would be responsible for an easement for the stormwater management, they said they, they could not tell why it was there, but they had no objection to it being extinguished. We then went to the Sussex Soil Conservation District, which is the overall entity responsible for stormwater management. They reviewed the whole thing, they said the same reason, they could not see a need for it, given that there's a development agreement with the city already for the subdivision, you can get at the, the area from other places. Then the City of Lewis, the staff itself, they also reviewed their records to see if anybody could come up to find why the easement is there, and the bottom line, no one, no one could. So I am, I am working with Mike Hoffman, the Board of Public Works lawyer, we have, we pretty much have a easement, and we're doing it, another easement with the Board of Public Works, just out of the abundance of caution, in case all the other stuff already there doesn't cover it, and that'll be executed by the developer to Anglers Nest, so that if the Board of Public Works ever needs access, or the city ever needs access to that back part of the property, they can have it, but they already have it off of Public Road, off of East Market Street, so. So it's a little bit of housekeeping, but it's a, it's a real big housekeeping deal for the properties involved, and, and again, it's unclear why it happened, it just did, but this is the opportunity to clear it up. So on behalf of all, all eight lots, really, I'm asking that it be extinguished.
Any questions from the table?
I have a couple of questions, please. Have you been able to identify, find the easement? I assume it was recorded at the courthouse, has that been located?
See, that's a good question, because the easement is found only in one place, it's on the record plan. The plan that was submitted to the town council that was approved shows, it's written, utility slash stormwater 15-foot easement, and it's shown across the back of eight lots.
Right.
But what is not anywhere, nowhere does it explain who the easement is to. See, an easement, you don't give an easement just to everybody, you give an easement to this entity, to this agency, nowhere. Restrictions, development agreement, nowhere is it given to anyone. So it's an easement to nobody that you can't get to that doesn't go anywhere. But, but legally, it's a huge impact on lots.
And I'm looking at the document, which I think you, I believe you provided this to the planning commission, which is the same document that was provided to us, and I note in the general notes section of this document, and by the way, for the, for everyone who's watching from home and here in the room, this document is signed by the former city manager, the city engineer, and I believe it was also signed by our planning commission, it was indeed, and other, other people. And this was in '12, in July of '12, if I'm reading the numbers correctly, around the middle of the month of 2012.
2012.
2012. So my question is, there, and in the general notes section of this plot, there is a statement number, number five, that says this plan does not verify to the location and/or existence of easements or right-of-ways crossing subject property as no title search was provided.
That, you will see that exact language, I think, on every survey that you see, and I don't know historically why that is, that is, surveyors put that on a document because they don't do a title search, that's all that means.
Right.
Because what typically then follows is notes saying, if this easement were for the Board of Public Works, it would specifically say, the easement shown on this plot is for the.
I understand that.
The language you read is just pro forma language.
And I appreciate that very much, Mr. Schaub. And the BPW has, they've searched their records, and they've said that they have no record of securing an easement for this property.
There is no, there is no record anywhere.
Right.
It is only where it is, and that, that document I gave is just one of the pages, the subdivision plan contains many pages, either page show the road layout.
Right.
And topography, that's the only, well, it's actually in two places, because it's similar.
Correct.
But two pages have it, but that's it. The, the existence of easement is where it's written, 15-foot utility slash stormwater easement.
And Mr. Schaub, the, I think you've mentioned a minute ago that you would, you'll be preparing or new easements or additional easements will be prepared for, to accommodate other utilities, stormwater utilities, maybe?
No, it's just, it's a little hard to, it's hard to see on this, well, it's, but.
This is the stormwater management.
That's just, there are two stormwater management areas there, and if you look, there's a swell right there, and there's another one. At this moment, that is the, that is the only direct access.
Correct.
To the stormwater management areas from a public street. They're nine feet wide.
Right.
So what we decided, myself and the lawyer for the board, that just in the abundance of caution, now, here's the other, the Board of Public Works at this moment has no responsibility. This is the developer and then the HOA's responsibility to do this maintenance. So it is just in the case, the developer or, or the homeowners association doesn't do what they're supposed to do, and the board had to do something, they would have the right to come on the property. But in fact, what we're doing is because of nine-foot swales, there are pipes in those drainage pipes from the city, we're also giving an easement coming in from East Market Street across the.
Right, but on the same plot, it states very clearly here, and you do, I had a mic, a magnifying glass at home that I used because the print is so small, but it does state that there's already an easement here and here, and it's described as a eight-foot-wide stormwater easement. So was that secure, was that?
Well, it's part, it, it's just part of the storm, it, it is the access to the stormwater management area.
So that's ingress egress?
Yes.
Rather than placement?
But that's included in the document that we are preparing because, again, the only easement language anywhere is on that plot. And so the, the board said that they would like to just clarify it, and we said, fine. So we're just saying again, in a separate document.
Okay.
Those nine-foot swales can be accessed as well as coming across.
I see, so what you're going to be doing is securing the rights in this easement that have been suggested or implied here but never secured, is that correct?
There's two RCP pipes that lead from the catch basins that go back in open space.
Correct.
There's no easement, those are in just open space.
I understand.
The process of these nine-foot easements are to get those pipes into an easement.
Into an easement.
Which no longer, that does not exist today.
Correct.
Those are just no.
Correct, so like I said, this document suggests that the easements are in place when in fact, they're not.
There's two nine-foot slivers to pee.
I understand, thank you.
It's really more like the easements were put in the wrong place.
They're not necessary.
Right.
No, but these are, these are necessary because there are pipes there, and the pipes need to be covered by an easement.
But during the process of formalizing.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, that's actually not even part of.
I understand that, I'm just saying.
Let's not mix it up.
I understand.
Yeah, the bottom line is you've got BPW and the SCD both saying the same thing, and they're both saying, you know, it doesn't have this. It was well-written, by the way, sir, having read what was given to us, if you gave that to us, it was well-written.
Thanks.
Quite clear to me.
That is something that, you know, you need to vacate it.
If it was in my handwriting, you wouldn't have said it as well.
So, Scott, we're just simply looking to remove the easement that's not necessary, so do we have a motion to?
Yeah, we, we need a motion to, to vacate an easement with Anglers Nest community, because... Yeah, we, we need a motion to, to vacate an easement with Anglosness community because...
So are you making that?
Yes, I'm making that motion.
It is funny that, excuse me, I'm sorry, Carolyn.
That's okay. She was talking to me too.
Okay. Well, I, I guess what, and I, I understand what you're asking for. I am not obstructing here at all.
Yes.
But it is interesting to me that we are considering, uh, vacating an easement that in fact does not exist.
It doesn't exist.
I mean, that's, what are we...
Only on the plaque.
We're clearing up the books. We have to clear the books on here.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is curious.
But let me explain why it makes a difference. The reason is, so when I, I have a settlement that has been pending now for several months, there's a completed house that cannot be sold.
Right.
Because when I write a report to the bank for the buyer, I would have to report that there's a violation on that property.
Right, and that's...
Now, I couldn't explain why because I couldn't say who the easement was to, but I would have to report, well, guess what? No bank is going to loan the money, just as those other homeowners in their property disclosures would have to disclose that their home was built in an easement area.
Correct.
How many people are going to buy a house in an easement? They won't. Even though it's not needed, doesn't make sense. It's just a fact because easement's the one, the one rule is you can't block, you can't put any permanent easement.
Correct. And Mr. Schaub, the, um, the retention wall that runs parallel in the backyard area, that, you know, runs parallel with the backyard, that is, uh, that is owned by the lot owner or by the community?
Well, I, I, I mentioned to Glenn in an email earlier, I, I probably misspoke at the planning commission because I, I think I said it ran along the whole back.
And it does not.
It's, it is just on individual lots for people who put them there. It is their, it is their wall on their property.
So that was not, okay, so that wall...
I, I said, I had incorrectly, I think, said it went along the whole back. It does not. It only goes along the back of people's lots who chose to put them. It turns out Mr. Holt, Mr. Bevel are most affected because they had, they had the lot that was, basically had the chance of caving in the most. So when they bought it, the developer agreed to put that retaining wall on their lot. The others were just added by individuals, but it's on the lots, their response, it's their wall. It's no one else's wall.
Well, I'm convinced that by, because the BPW and SCD basically said that, you know, it's not necessary, then I still make that motion.
So you're making a motion to extinguish the easement
To vacate the easement.
that is on the, located on the building, the, the property plat, plan?
Correct.
Because there is nothing to extinguish it in, in any other recorded, yeah?
It's like cleaning up the books.
Right. But just for, is that adequate?
The way it's worked is, is provided that you all approve it. Bill and I would work together to create a document that basically says, "There's a plat out there that shows this easement. However, the city council has acted and that easement is extinguished."
Correct.
Now it goes to get recorded behind this and for everybody that goes forward will be able to represent that there's no longer an easement there.
And, and folks can do what they need to do. Right. Good with that.
So Carolyn, do you have a motion?
Yes.
I'll second Carolyn's motion.
Have we got a motion in a second? Can we call to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's a four-o.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. The next L three presentation, possible action or request from BB Healthcare regarding extension of conditional use agreements for the following properties, 410 Market Street, 406 Market Street, the former Lewis Convalescent Center, now BB's, uh, office building known as Bob, and 902 Savannah Road. Um, there's a, there was an attachment concerning these conditional use, um, with the description of what they're being used for now. Is everyone satisfied with that?
Yes.
So with this, Glenn, this has to be, this has to be a year-on-year thing? Does? Okay.
It does.
So several of you have asked me about that, and under the code, as it's written now, it needs to be a year-on-year thing. About two years ago, Janelle put a draft ordinance on my desk that some, if you've seen my desk, it's probably at the bottom of the pile, that I think we, we, um, believe there's benefit to resurrecting and allowing more flexibility in how long a conditional use would remain in place.
Well, I agree with that.
So, so we can certainly bring that forward.
Sure, yeah, yeah, but as it sits now, this is, we got to do one thing. Okay.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to approve these conditional uses, uh, for BB Healthcare properties?
Um, sure. I'll make a motion that we approve these, um, um, expansion of these conditional use agreements for another year.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, L four, is presentation of possible action on approval to extend Canalfront parcel lease extension for 354 Pilot Town Road. Um, Amber, you want to give us some background on this one?
Yeah, so, so this is, um, I did some, some research on this because I knew that, that there had been some history on these leases. There are, I believe, thirteen properties, um, on this side of the canal that are, that abut the canal, that are zoned open space, that are owned by the city but leased to property owners. In two thousand and five, and the, um, the resolution from two thousand and five is, is in your packet, um, in two thousand and five, mayor and city council made the determination because they were, the different, um, leaseholds were coming up at different periods in time, um, they developed this ordinance and approved it, or I'm sorry, this resolution and approved it, that set forth, um, a, a policy for how we would, um, charge for the leases. And the idea was that we would line all of the leases up to be, to expire at the same time so that as that expiration comes closer, they could all be treated, um, similarly or in the same way, rather than kind of a haphazard, um, way of dealing with them. So, um, now this had, this mentioned twelve leases which will terminate between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-three. I do know that in twenty eighteen, there was, um, the, the final lease extension that was done on this was extended that particular lease to twenty twenty-five. So at, at that point, all of the leases were lined up to expire in twenty twenty-five. Um, and the idea was that it would give council the opportunity to evaluate how to deal with the leases together rather than on an individual basis that could lead to some sort of inequity over time.
Right, right, right. So, and, so we have a request, and the requ, request is for, uh, a lease that has more than two years of life left in it.
Right. So the, the lease that, that is before you this evening is currently set to expire in twenty twenty-five
Correct.
with all of the other leases. Um, so what, what I've been telling people when they've asked is that, um, that, you know, council is looking as we get nearer to twenty twenty-five to revisit how we deal with all of these leases together, not individually.
Individually.
So, um, again, I think that this is, I think we're, we're nearing twenty twenty-five, but we're not there. So I think it's for mayor and council to determine, um, when and how you want to address the big picture before you then
Right.
start extending any individual leases.
This should be in our workshop then. This should be in a workshop discussion, do you think?
Yeah, but I mean, it's something I'd personally, I'd like to get in front of it. I don't want this to wait till even, you know, twenty twenty-four. If we could...
Oh, yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, if we could bring all the thirteen, is it thirteen that are in total?
I think it's thirteen total, and we, we can pull all of that information together, um, and, and put it on one of your workshops. I don't know if you want to do it in June, or if you want to wait and do it at, at a future time.
Do we have room on that June workshop?
Well, not, not the June first, but June, June twenty-ninth. Um, right now, the only request that I have on that is to have a discussion with, um, the five of you about, um, code enforcement priorities.
That's June twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth.
Oh. Okay. Well...
That'll be nine AM on June twenty-ninth.
Okay. So I think, you know, I think for the benefit of, of some of the folks here, I mean, this is another, you know, situation in Lewis where things are fairly unique with leaseholds. And we have, you know, on Pilot Town Road, there's a vast mag, I think half and half roughly, or half privately, or deed, and half roughly, or quick claims and other things. But I do think it's very important that we, to, to Andrew's point and Carolyn's point is, I think we need to act on this sooner than later, even though twenty twenty-five is still a few years away. I don't see any reason why we couldn't work with these thirteen property owners in regards to extending it beyond whatever it is, ten, fifteen years, but also with the understanding that the current lease payments they're making need to reflect, you know, you know, twenty twenty-two. And some of them are as low as two hundred bucks, I'm, I'm told, and some are as high as eight hundred. There's, they're not even close to reflecting what the real property values are.
Absolutely.
So I think we need to address that, but I also think, you know, we need to give them some assurances that, um, you know, that the city, at least from my perspective, I don't know why the city would ever discontinue or decline to renew the leases. It doesn't make any sense to me. Um, I mean, as long as I can remember, those have been part of people's homes there. Some people don't even know that there, it's a lease. Um, it's, it's, it's very confusing, but I, you know, I don't see any reason why the city would decline that because that would drastically impact their property values and what they paid for that property.
Absolutely.
And it, it, you know, even though technically we could, legally we could, I don't see any reason why we would.
You see, the twenty-ninth is too long.
Well, I don't, I'm not saying it's too long, it's just that I, I would like to see us, you know, at least give some assurances to folks out there that, you know, we're going to deal with this and we're going to deal with it, you know, soon, we're going to deal with it well before twenty twenty-five.
Well, absolutely. Absolutely.
And I don't think anyone is suggesting that we drag our feet here at all. I am suggesting that we do have the benefit of time on this particular issue, and it is more than two years. And, uh, I like the idea of setting a date in late June or any time this summer to start this, have a workshop, but, uh, you know, there's, this per, the, these owners or the lessees have the benefit of a lease that is in place and is still honored by the city. We're not suggesting that we're going to revoke it. I have never heard that, that suggested
No.
by this body or by anyone, so I think...
It has, it, there is, there are people out there who have heard that.
Well, they might, you know, there are lots of rumors that flood through the town.
And again, so part of our role is to assure them that that's not the case.
Right, and, and I think I've just said that by saying what I said.
Okay.
Right.
Um, let me just suggest this. The twenty-ninth, that's fine with me, but here is just a, a, a tentative roadmap that I would like to see, that I think would benefit both the, the, the homeowners over there as well as the city. I would like us to see if possible, and this is ambitious, we could start on the twenty-ninth, start reviewing the situ, the properties there, what the leasehold payments are, and if, see if we, by the end of twenty twenty-two, the end of this year, we could actually not only extend those beyond, but also have appraisals done and adjust those leaseholds to a very fair, reasonable number. What, who does that benefit? That benefits the leaseholders because they now have certainty, but also benefits the city because we're now going to be getting, instead of waiting till twenty twenty-five, we're going to be getting substantially more revenue from those properties. Because ostensibly, those thirteen properties will be paying a lot more than they're paying now.
You would direct staff to do that prior to our June twenty-ninth so they were ready for...
Staff is starting to do that, right.
Or have the June twenty-ninth meeting and then have them study that.
I would like, you know, I, I want to make sure, you know, we, we, as Tim said, we need, we don't need to rush to this, but I, I'm being ambitious here. I think there's an opportunity to resolve this by the end of this year, and, and, and so that all those property owners will have another fifteen years, ten, whatever we decide through that, but also they have that peace of mind and certainty. But it benefits the city because we'll be getting substantially more revenue for two years. If we don't do that, otherwise, we're going to continue to collect the eight hundred and two hundred dollar, um, payments for the next two years.
Yes, I, I...
So you'd be saying, once we figure that out, you'd call in the remaining two years of lease and put them on this new lease agreement?
Yes, exactly.
That's exactly what he's saying.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
And it, right now, the calculus is done on canal frontage, is that right?
No, it's, uh, street frontage, I think.
It's linear, it's linear foot, which I think if we were going to do, I mean, depending on how you want to do it, if you want to do it based on, like, an, an appraised value, you would probably look at square foot, so...
Yeah, but currently, it's based upon the front, front foot along Pilot Town Road. So it's not canal side.
No, it's just a one side.
It's along the street, along the road.
So now you're getting a little bit of a discussion about how you would actually do it?
Yeah.
And that's for another day, so now you're only talking about whether you want to extend this lease or whether you want to have a workshop to start looking at it.
We want to have a workshop. We have to have a workshop.
You're exactly right. I just, I just simply wanted to be clear about, you know, at least what our intentions are.
Where we're trying to go.
You want to formalize that with a motion, or?
Um, yeah, I'll make a motion that we defer action on, on this property of three, five, four until, uh, June twenty-ninth, whereas we will then begin the process of evaluating this property as well as the other twelve properties, um, on, um, Pilot Town Road.
Yes, I'll make a second. That's...
Are you going to make a decision on this, on the twenty-ninth?
It's a workshop that I thought we were talking about.
Right. That's what I'm saying. Moving to the workshop.
Yeah, right.
Start the process.
So you wouldn't make a decision at that date?
No.
We'd, we'd kind of develop the framework at that point.
So what you're looking to do is to defer the action
Yeah.
on this and then take holistically the item of the lots on Pilot Town Road to a workshop to discuss
Right.
the lease agreement and the costing of the lease agreement
Correct.
to workshop, and then come back at a later time, once that has been determined, to make a decision about this application.
Right, and, and, and I would, before I do that, however, I would ask, um, Leanne Wilkinson, who is, I believe, the purchaser of three fifty-four Pilot Town, or Bill, representing, to make, to ensure that, um, there's not a, because, because you're specifically the only property listed here, um, seeking, uh, an extension. For what we're proposing, is that, would that cause any hardship regarding any possibility?
You can come up.
Yeah, you can just come up, Leanne. I just want to make sure that what we're, you know, we're, we're deferring this till June twenty-ninth, um, but is it, is there a, is there a particular reason why we would need to do this property now as opposed to perhaps later?
Do I need to come up there?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
I just want to make sure it doesn't cause a hardship.
Name and, name and address.
Leanne Wilkinson, one thirty Jefferson Avenue. Um, the only reason this is on your agenda tonight is because when I agreed to buy the property, I put in the contract that I wanted her to extend her lease, um, on the canal frontage. And when I did that, I didn't know that, I vaguely remembered after Anne Marie said something to me about two thousand and five and making them all end on twenty...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. I, I kind of remembered that, but it had definitely gone out of my mind. So it was, it's in the offer, in the contract, I should say, that she's got to extend this lease for me prior to closing. Okay? But I think what, I, one of the things I think everybody here needs to think about, because these canal front leases, as far as I know, and Anne Marie can correct me,[1700.28] these canal front leases, as far as I know, and Anne Marie can correct me, are all the same, they're 20 years, 10 years at a time, is that right?
No, no.
As a matter of fact, the last, the last one that was done, I think was done in 2018 or 19, and it was, everything was done to line up to 2025 so that they could all be dealt with at the same time.
Right, but I mean, prior to that, where all these leases.
Prior to that, they were.
20 years, 10 at a time.
As I understand it, yes.
Okay. As a Realtor, not as a buyer, but as a Realtor, that's what I've always known about these 13 properties. I didn't know it was 13 properties till she told me it was 13 properties. Whenever I sell something on Pilot Town Road, I have to look up to see, does the person own the land? Do they lease the land, or do they think they own the land? That's the three choices, and Bill can tell you about that. I think I own the land is you have some sort of quick claim deed to it. You do own the land, you've got a real deed to it. And then the other people have a lease with the City of Lewis. So I always check, and I sold this property to this lady in 1996, and I, again, vaguely remembered that it was a leased parcel on the canal. But one, a couple of things you have to think about is when you're selling a Lewis Beach house, which we have, I don't know how many hundreds of those or thousands of those that we've got, they're all on these 99-year leases with a 99-year renewal, and Bill's always told me, like, they got to keep renewing these leases, Leanne, because he has to talk to my clients who've never heard of this before, and they say, what do you mean, I don't own the land, you know? And so Bill has to explain it to them. He's gone as far as written a letter, the city has written a letter, we have to send it to the banks.
Oh, yeah.
So they all know how we can get these, because you get to like two days before closing and somebody says, we're not giving you the loan even though we approved the loan. So, and that's happened many times. So I think the not knowing till 2025 whether you're going to get your lease renewed in 2025 is a real hardship on anybody who would be trying to sell one of these 13 properties. Because it's a huge part of the value of the property. You can't build a house on it, you can't even build a boathouse on it anymore. You can only build some sort of gazebo type thing. But most of the people, including this lady that I am purchasing from, have already gotten permits to build a dock, and they have docks, and they keep their boats there. And it's just, it's just not good to have to wait until then. So when you're renewing your lease over on Lewis Beach, let's say you've got, let's just say you're a Cape Shores house, and you've got, I don't know, 70 years, 65 years left on your original lease that you got when you first bought your property there, you can renew that right now. They can send you a letter and you guys will renew their lease. So if somebody's really scared and they're like, oh my God, my great-great-grandchildren are not going to have this, you know, this lease on this house that I'm buying for them, you know, for our family in the future, I think it's just something to think about. These, it's only 13. Why they're only leased and everybody else owns their property? I would say it's 90% of the people on Pilot Town Road own the land on the canal. And a few people think they own the land, and then there's 13 people who get a lease from the city. So if it could be figured out, just so people have peace of mind, I don't, this, this property I'm buying has probably not much of, I mean, it has a dock on it, I haven't even walked down to see what the dock looks like, but it has a dock on it. I know she put it on after she bought it. But some people have major, major stuff done on their property. They've got more than one slip, and they've gotten permits to do this, thinking that they're always going to have this lease. So if there's some chance that you might not have the lease, somebody needs to tell everybody now, so that's all.
No, I understand that. I had property in Dewey like that, and I bought it, and it was like a 30-year, but they let me extend it to 99. You had the option to go in and buy it and pay that amount.
Right, exactly.
Or you could extend it. So, no, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's just, it's just weird that it's just 13 properties, and hopefully you guys can figure that out.
Right, yeah. We got it, thank you.
Thank you.
What process can we do to make sure that the 13 property owners are all sort of aware that?
So we've got files on all of this, so we've got the information on which properties it is, who the owners were at the point in time in 2005. Obviously, we can update that. So we have all of the information that we need to kind of put things together. I mean, I guess, and I don't know the long-term history on this, on why it's city-owned and not privately-owned, and, you know, my understanding is the big difference between this and Lewis Beach is these aren't by right leases, these are discretionary. So, so I, again, I don't know what that means in terms of how you look at, how you extended, you know, I think that the cost was the thing I heard as the issue, that it wasn't, there wasn't, if they didn't all expire at one time, you couldn't have a consistent way to develop some sort of a market-based cost to it.
Yeah.
It's unclear to me, though, do they need to, like, in this case, they submitted a letter requesting the renewal. If we don't get a hold of all 13, and we decide the action we're going to take is to renew them, do they, in fact, need to request for us to renew the lease?
I mean, it doesn't renew unless they request it, is what I would, especially since it's not by right, is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, yeah.
We can change.
Have to request it. Okay, interesting. So therefore, they would have to opt in essentially if they wanted to, their lease extended, let's say, in November of 2022, as opposed to waiting to 2025. They would have to request it.
So I would expect that if you all develop a mechanism for how you're going to proceed with extension beyond 2025, I would expect all of the property owners would be interested. But I would think from a, you know, fairness and transparency perspective, we would certainly reach out to all of the owners and let them know.
Of course. The other thing I'll bring out to everyone's attention is that per this lease that we have in front of us, this example, and if this is a, if you will, boilerplate lease, I don't see any term in here that suggests that there is a requirement of notice for...
That's actually the resolution, not the lease, so that's.
Well, that's true, but it is for, it's the, do we have, do we have a copy of the lease?
We have all of the leases, yeah.
Okay, but we don't have that in our binder today.
No.
Correct, all right. I'm not going to complete my statement then, all right.
So is everyone, do we have a motion to, that Councilperson Saliba put together to defer this to the June 29th for a workshop?
Yes.
Second on that?
Yes, absolutely, I second that. I think a workshop is in order.
Pen of motion, second. Called a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
And just for clarity, what we'll bring at the 29th is kind of the history, the terms of everything, things about all 13, not just this one, right?
Yes.
We're looking at the.
Yeah, the Tim 20 might be useful to have the leases themselves and understand, try matching who's.
Yep.
So screen action, make a decision.
Okay. All right, L5, presentation of possible action to amend the City of Lewis Personnel Manual to incorporate an anti-bullying policy. Amber, you want to give us just a little background on this, and then I don't think there's need to go through the?
Yeah, so we have, in the manual, we have an anti-harassment policy. Shelby Shockley, our HR administrator, did some research and put together an anti-bullying policy that kind of works hand-in-hand with that. It has been reviewed by Rebecca Doyle, who is the employment attorney at Baird-Vand Dallas-Rockstat, and so that incorporates her changes, and we have sent it to all of the employees to review. Prior to the meeting, I think we actually made some changes based on some of the comments that we received from, from one of the employees. So it's an update to the manual to make it clear. You know, the whole idea is we treat each other with respect, so there are some behaviors that don't quite cross into legal harassment but are still inappropriate, and we want to make sure we're covering those behaviors as well.
Sure, and the one thing I would mention also in reading this, it's not just staff employees, but it goes to, you know, members of councils and commissions as well.
Yep, and our contractors.
Yeah, so everyone's beholden to the same behavior in a workplace.
Yep.
And one thing that I would like to speak to is the fact that, yes, the council is, and all commission members and so forth, are held to the same standard. But in the, in the process for reporting bullying and managing the reporting part, I understand, I can see clearly where the line is for employees to report to their manager, to their department manager, to HR, possibly to the city manager. But for people who are serving on commissions and so forth, and on council, I don't see how, I don't see the reporting process in here, and maybe I've overlooked it?
So you mean to say, for instance, if a city employee were to bully?
If I were to bully Tim, for example.
Or, right, exactly.
What if I, what if I were to bully Tim?
Yeah, that's true, too.
It could be staff to, right.
Absolutely. But I don't, something I don't see in here.
I thought that we got it in here. I specifically, so a person who believes they have experienced or witnessed bullying must promptly report the bullying to their department manager and human resource administrator unless the accused is the department manager. Okay. So I guess, from our perspective, I think when we talked it through, didn't we talk about if it was a volunteer or a contractor, they would report it to the human resource administrator, because they wouldn't have a department manager?
So straight to Shelby?
Right.
Let's do anything.
And then, I mean, typically, so if it was something that Shelby would not be comfortable investigating on her own, if it's, you know, if I did something wrong, you know, that, you know, obviously, she's a subordinate, she would contract it out to the employment attorney.
Attorney, right. I think it'd be helpful to actually include language to that effect. We have lots of volunteers.
We figured out when we were coming up with the list for our orientation that's coming up, it's like 70.
Yeah.
It's a lot of people.
I was going to ask that, so you intend for folks to sign, acknowledge, or recede of these kinds of things?
The idea is that they would, that everybody, staff, staff, we've been doing it all along, that they're acknowledging that when we do the orientation with new council members, with our volunteers on committees, commissions, and boards, that they would sign an acknowledgement that they have received and reviewed the anti-bullying, anti-harassment, and code of conduct.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's all you really need to do from an HR point.
Okay.
So I guess my question is, are you comfortable if we just add language, or do you guys want to see it back before you approve it? Or do you just want me to work with Tim on that, that language?
I've seen it, and I've worked with this before, but Tim, what do you need?
You saying to just clarify where the volunteers would report to?
Right, and I'd be happy to work with you in life, I'm happy, sure.
Okay.
Good.
So then, just, somebody want to make a motion to approve it pending that?
Yeah. Okay, you want to make a motion, pending proven?
Proven, he's working with Anne Marie.
Either one of them. You can, you want to make a motion, Tim? Go ahead.
Either way, it doesn't matter.
Was there a motion already on the table?
No, there wasn't.
Okay. So I'll make a motion then. Let me just back up here. I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to the City of Lewis Personnel Manual to incorporate anti-bullying policy with the, with the requirement that staff, I will work with staff to include language that will include, to address all the volunteers who serve for the city, including council members.
Can we get a second on that?
Second.
All right, motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. And then, let's see, our last, but not least, is the presentation of possible action on a request from the History Book Festival to have food trucks at their event on September 24th. And who wants to introduce this?
Wake up, Jen.
Jen, you want to come introduce this one? You've been waiting a long time for that, right? Here we go.
Forgot you were back there.
Y'all saved the best for the last.
That's right.
That's right, that's right, Jen.
Because history is fun. Do you know what else is fun? Lunch.
Didn't have that today.
And so on behalf of the 100 or so volunteers, plus all of our authors that come from all over, please let us have lunch.
There you go.
That's it, you got my letter, right?
Yeah, got the letter.
Questions?
I have a question.
You surprised, Jen?
No, surprised, all right. I like this idea very much. I, this, you call it a festival, right?
The History Book Festival is the only book festival in the nation dedicated to history. It has been in place in Lewis for five years.
Yep.
The last two have been online, so all of our friends on Zoom, we were with you, we miss you, but we're looking forward to being back in person.
Correct, and I hope this is a great success.
It is a great success.
But it continues, okay, I'm going to suggest that it continue to be a great success. And one way that I'm going to say. Yeah, I do have something else to say, thank you.
All right, me, guys, I tried, guys.
I'm having fun with y'all.
I tried.
With respect to the food trucks, I have one suggestion, and we can call it a request. And that is, I'd like to make sure that we, that you, well, I'd like you to consider giving preference to any Lewis business that has a food truck, and ask them to, give them a priority, I'll call it, to participate as a vendor.
So any of y'all who've ever run events know that getting food trucks is more than a little tricky, because there's a supply and demand issue.
Okay.
So we have done that from the beginning. It has been hard, and now, for the first time, we have a crack crew, including Kathy and Christine, who is here.
We have what?
Part of our logistics crew.
Oh, good, I'll talk to them.
Yeah, yeah, and this was our first year of finding out that there was sort of a process in place in town in terms of needing to come to y'all to ask for being able to have food trucks. So just, you know, super secret here, I don't think everybody in town knows that that's the process, so.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's included in this.
And so at this point, you might not be able to get any food trucks because it's so late in the year, but we've gone by the process, I know, I know.
Well, there was a really good food truck who is an in-town person who was working down at Lewis Lacle on the day of the election.
Yep.
So, and we can connect you, we.
I know, we tried, it's Kathy. Talk to Kathy. Yeah, they're booked.
Well, I have, anyway, I would appreciate some effort.
The History Book Festival, we also run a shuttle throughout the day, so we bring people to downtown the whole day.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
But anyway, I'll speak to you after the meeting.
Yeah, but no, I think everybody who knows us knows that we're, we've got, the whole point of the History Book Festival is to raise all boats in town, so we focus on our other nonprofit partners, we focus on the business community, we focus on our citizens, and we do our best by the literary community as well, so. Yep.
Appreciate it, Jen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
So we'll give you a motion then.
All right.
Make a motion that the History Book Festival have food trucks at their event on September 24th.
Up to five.
Yes.
Hopefully.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Lunch.
You're welcome.
All right, folks, that's, that's it. So can I get a, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn, so moved.
Second.
All right.
All in favor?
All in favor, aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Two hours, baby.
Congrats, Andrew.
Good job.
Two hours, Andrew. Two hours, baby.
No, I'm going to talk about mine, I did my own.
Yeah, that's what I gave her.
No, I don't, I don't get into anybody else.